Meeting will come to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Alders Harrington McKinney?
I am here.
Kemble?
Here.
King is excused. Martin?
Here.
Palm is excused. Fair?
Here.
Rumel?
Here.
Skidmore?
Here.
Verveer? Wood?
Here.
Zellers?
Here.
Aaron's?
Here.
Balde?
Yes.
Bedar Silof?
Here.
Carter?
Present.
Cheeks?
Here.
Clear?
Here.
DeMarbas excused. Eskrich?
Here.
And Hall?
Here.
We have quorum.
Quorum present, the council is in session. Alder and Rumel?
Oh, Mayor. I don't have an agenda. I move suspension of rules. Suspend Rules 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for items so designated on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is. Suspension. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Alder and Rumel?
Are there any people who had early registrations?
No, we have no early registrations.
Should we go into the consent agenda?
That would be appropriate. You want to take up item number one before doing the consent agenda?
Let's move item number one. An Honoring Resolution Recognizing and Commending Mary Charnitz for her professional and personal dedication to the City of Madison on the occasion of her retirement.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion and a second. And we have the resolution here. I just want to show it to you. I don't know if you can see how small the type is. But when you make the kinds of contributions that Mary's made to the city and you want to get a fraction of it in, this is what it comes down to. But I am going to read from something with a much larger font. Whereas Mary Charnitz is retiring from the City of Madison on January 5, 2018 after 38 years of service to the city, 32 of them with the Community Development Division's Community Development Block Grant Unit, and whereas Mary's extensive knowledge of community development practices, particularly around neighborhood and affordable housing development, has made her an invaluable resource and advisor to city staff and community agencies. And whereas Mary served as the CDBG Unit's Lead Project Manager for Neighborhood Centers for most of her career, and whereas under Mary's leadership, the CDBG Unit provided crucial startup funding for half of the existing neighborhood centers, helping newly emerging lower-income neighborhoods develop needed community gathering spaces that help bring together people of diverse backgrounds and build community while also providing facilities where residents can access high-quality community services and programming. And whereas following the dissolution of United Neighborhood Centers, Mary worked with individual centers to help them continue as independent corporations without loss of quality of programming and leadership. And whereas Mary played a key role in establishing the Warner Park Community Recreation Center, chairing a team tasked with planning its development and its operation by the Parks Division with support from the Northside Planning Council, a vision for Madison's north side first articulated in 1948 and reiterated in subsequent neighborhood plans in which Mary worked. And whereas in the course of her career, Mary worked with a host of nonprofit organizations and private developers to advance dozens of rental housing developments that serve to improve and expand affordable housing options and stabilize struggling neighborhoods. And whereas more recently, Mary has played a key role in helping to successfully launch a new affordable housing initiative, which leverages strong partnerships with developers in the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority to provide quality new rental housing affordable to lower-income households in the City of Madison. And whereas Mary has applied her vast programmatic experience to help develop clear policies and standards for use in deploying city-administered resources. And whereas thanks in particular to the contributions of one long-serving council member from the city's south side, Mary was recently notified that she had logged a sufficient number of hours staffing the CDBG Committee to qualify her for enshrinement in the National CDBG Committee Hall of Fame. And whereas Mary's checkered past with respect to her interactions with office technology is expected to cause a collective sigh of relief from computer equipment in the vicinity of her desk upon news of Mary's impending retirement. And whereas based on past experience, that collective sigh will likely be sufficient to overturn the mug of coffee on her desk, spilling its contents one last time over her files that she's about to pass on. And whereas Mary's colleagues in the Community Development Division recognize that it will be extraordinarily difficult to replace the wealth of knowledge and experience that Mary's accumulated in nearly four decades of service with the city, now therefore be it resolved that the common council recognizes and thanks Mary Charnitz for her service to the City of Madison and its residents and congratulates her on well-deserved retirement from city services and wishes her well in her future endeavors. So here's the official proclamation, in case you ever want to read it without glasses.
Thank you all very much. It's really been a pleasure working for the city and working with so many of you through lots and lots of years. So, good luck. Keep doing the great things that you do and I'll just keep watching the news and seeing what's going on. Thank you.
Alder and Fair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't say too much, Mary. I just wanted to personally say thank you. I was on CDBG, have been since I've been on the council, and had a few projects come my way early on. The Teresa Terrace Neighborhood Center, the Meadowwood renovation, and, you know, I really didn't know what I was doing, to be honest. And you and Lori really helped me along, and so I just appreciate that. I appreciate your dedication to our neighborhoods in my district and throughout the city. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alder and Rumel?
Thank you, Mary. I haven't been on CDBG in a long time, but there was a time when the director resigned, retired, and you took over. And that seems so long ago, almost a decade. But you were always, you know, always so positive and willing to listen to Alders who had questions and help us understand all the Byzantine rules of federal pass-through money. And I know you will be missed, and you've done a great behind-the-scenes service to the city, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd just like to make one comment, and it goes to something larger than Alderwoman Rumel expressed, which is the absolute chaos that you have put up with during your tenure with the city. There has been reorganizations of your own agency many times, reorganizations at the state, significant changes in law and policy from the federal government, and probably every six or eight months when things had stabilized from the last change, you encountered another one. And so, how we're going to encounter future challenges, I'm not quite sure, but your endurance and your perseverance is really appreciated. So, again, thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, we'll come to a vote on the question. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Alder and Rumel?
At this time, I would like to move the consent agenda and items which have registrants wishing to speak, items which require an extraordinary roll-call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and items which other persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. So, before us are public hearing items number three through eight, and it looks to be a short meeting, at least for item numbers. Agenda item 12, Legislative File Number 49261, consideration of override of mayor veto of a Class B/Class C wine license for Bill Great Lake LLC join business as Taco Bell. 14 votes required to override. And one item on the exclusion list is item number 73, Legislative File Number 47513, a substitute supporting the Bus Rapid Transit Interagency Staff Team Recommendation to Proceed with Phase 1 Project Development in an east-west corridor running through the UW campus and Madison Central Business District with the report of the TPC. Elder Kemble wishes to move the original version 1 for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any other items for exclusion on the question? Excuse me. Alder and Clear?
I'd like to separate number 28.
28 as well. Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none on the motion then. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. At this point, it's not quite a quarter to the hour, so we can't go into the public hearings. So, if there's no objection, Alder and Clear, would you like to take up item 28 at this time? Is there any objection to taking up item 28 at this time? Seeing none, Alder and Clear?
Well, I don't know that it's my place to make the motion, but...
Alder and Rumel?
28, substitute creating Section 38.07 Sub 4 and renumbering Section 38.074 through 21 to Section 38.075 through 22 of the Madison General Ordnance to allow patrons to order alcohol sales online and pick up merchandise in a designated parking area of the store. The ALRC recommendation is to adopt. Move adoption.
Thank you. Discussion. Alder and Clear?
Thank you. So, I had some questions on this that probably are best answered by the sponsor, who unfortunately is not with us this evening. And so, unless there's someone on staff, or Alder Bedar, or Alder Skidmore, as members of the ALRC, might be comfortable answering question, otherwise maybe we should refer this.
Okay. You want to try, and let's see where we go?
Sure.
And I think I've got the same question you do. Maybe, maybe not.
Well, my question is pretty general, which is, huh? I'm just trying to bend my mind around why this is a good idea and who's requesting it and whether this is a national trend, whether this is something that customers have requested, and maybe either of the Alders from ALRC can sort of characterize the discussion at ALRC. I see it was just a voice vote, so I'm presuming that means there wasn't necessarily controversial among the members.
I'm sorry.
That's right. I was just prattling on.
Alder and Bedar?
We don't have any members of the public who have registered to speak. I see some...
I just looked on item 28, and I don't see any registrations on 28.
You did complete it? So, because I see members that could speak to how they brought this forward from some of their stores. Would we be able to allow them to speak?
If there's no objection, since it doesn't follow...
Did you register? Oh, you made a mistake in the number.
We do have registration on 21.
So, it was a mistake?
Uh...
Okay.
21 and 26 as well?
Yes, sir.
We have registrations on 21 and 26.
Do you want to speak?
21...
It's the Walmart.
For 26, we have Hannah John Taylor, supporting, available to answer questions on 26. And on 21, I can't read your handwriting. It's Brenton Alice, that much I got. Trenton Alice, supporting and available to answer questions. Alder and Clear?
Well, I would be happy to hear from applicants who, even though it's not this item specifically that are registered under...
So, the people who are here and supporting the concept in item 28, anybody want to come up and explain it at the request of the council members? And I'll just add one more question, which is, I'm confused between the title and what I was told, which is, despite the title, the way the ordinance is written, the applicant will have to go into the store and make the transaction that it cannot be done in the parking lot, or it can't be delivered to the parking lot. It has to be in the store. But go ahead, please.
So, originally, it is to do it in the parking lot, not, they won't be coming in the store. It's to deliver it to their car on the curbside, to answer that question.
And do you want to answer all the...
Sure. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. What was the original question?
And thank you for letting us put you on the spot a little bit on this. But could you just give a little background in terms of what your impetus is in requesting this kind of change and how you envisioned it actually operationalizing?
Sure. So, oh...
Yes.
So, I'm Trent, I'm the store manager for the Walmart on the east side, and then this is my assistant manager of online grocery e-commerce, part of the business. So, Walmart's switching more towards online. Obviously, that's where a lot of the sales are going, and part of that is with online grocery pickup. I think over 1,000 stores have already converted nationwide to order groceries online. They can come pick it up at a select time. We deliver it to their car. What we're trying to achieve here is to include alcohol into those online sales for curbside pickup.
So, is there any requirement that people be buying additional groceries along with? I mean, I get your concept of, I'm buying 150 different grocery items and, you know, a six-pack of beer is part of those. It seems silly that I would have to come in the store to get that and all the rest of it. But could I just order, you know, four cases of beer and drive up and have it delivered to my car?
Well, the orders had to be put in by 1:00 PM, or had to be ordered four hours in advance. It's not like you can just order outside and then somebody's just going to come and throw it in your car. So, all the order, like I said, had to be four hours in advance. So, I know there was like a drive-through issuer, a comment earlier, but, and then there is no, like, it has to be a certain dollar amount of alcohol. It's just like the same as in the store. They can purchase whatever they want.
So, I could just order, you know, whatever alcohol I want online and then drive up. And I get that it's not really a drive-through, but operationally, it seems like it's pretty close in terms of me as a customer using it. You know, I'm not getting out of my car. It's kind of the same thing. So, that's the way it would work, is, you know, any amount of alcohol I can have delivered to my car. Is that correct?
Is there's a cutoff for that, or no?
I mean, there's reporting requirements once they buy a certain amount. That's legislated already.
Same as in the store.
I mean, there's really, the requirements when you're picking up online grocery outside with alcohol sales is actually more stringent than what retailers do in stores. So, I think the perception is that, oh, we're just going to go out and you're going to get your liquor, whatever, and then you're going to go... It's actually, the ID requirements are much more stringent outside that we would implement than would be if somebody was to put four cases of beer into a cart and go through our registers.
Could you articulate those restrictions a little bit?
Yeah. So, you know, when you go in the store, you could already, you know, there's a four-hour waiting period for you to order online groceries. So, you can't order past 1:00 PM for same-day pickup. So, you know, you'd have to order four hours in advance and then come to the store. The person who picks up the order has to be the one to, who put the order and has to be the one to pick up the order. And then if there's a car, or adults, we would have to ID everybody in the vehicle, barring if it was like a family and there's two kids, obviously, in the backseat, but we would ID everybody in that vehicle.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder and Bedar Silof is next.
Thank you. I told you at ALRC that the issue of whether there would be a mix of groceries and alcohol would be something that I was interested in, too. So, I knew it was going to come back, and I'll speak to it. But my question to you is, if you can further explain, just so that it's clear, that these ID requirements of everybody that's in the car, as opposed to if me and three of my colleagues here go to the, inside the store, and I'm the one paying, you would just ID me, correct?
Incorrect. If you are clearly together, and there is some question as to, I mean, we ID anybody who looks like they're under 40 years old. In the registers, if, barring to prevent third-party sales, we do ID everybody in a group. So, it's basically the same as we would employ out in vehicles.
And then, can you speak a little bit more about the reason, really, the broader reason behind even having requested and worked with Alder Viver, and you weren't? I just want to be clear that I just pointed to you because you were the ones that I recognized, but there were other retail stores that also had had the same conversation with Alder Viver about the increased number of online orders and the fact that this already happens in other jurisdictions, this type of, like, being able to get alcohol ordered online as part of your usually larger order?
Yeah. So, yeah, I know the Pick 'n Save on Junction Road has been here the last couple of times with us. It is an expanding business nationwide. I know, I think a few stores up north were recently approved to sell alcohol. At the end of the day, it's just because it's, it doesn't make sense for a customer to put in their entire order online, have it delivered curbside, and then have to come back into the store. Like, okay, go park your car in the parking lot and come in the store and then get your bottle of wine or whatever you need. So, it's about convenience.
I don't have any further questions for you. I will speak to, trying to explain the background. Alder and Clear?
Alderwoman Carter?
Thank you. Is this for all the Walmarts in Madison?
No. Currently, there's only two Walmarts in what we call our market that actually do online grocery pickup. It's Stoughton and then the Madison East Side Walmart. However, the company will probably expand. Obviously, I can't speak for the company as a whole, but they are expanding in stores every year, so...
And where is the east side one?
Off of...
Cusa Trail?
Right off of Stoughton Road, tucked back in there by the railroad tracks there.
Okay. Thank you.
And let me just follow that up. Any store in Madison, regardless of brand, who meets the qualifications of the ordinance can go to this program, correct? Alder and Skidmore?
Yes, thank you. Being on the ALRC, I wanted to comment, as one of the applicants is in my district, and that's the new name, Pick 'n Save on Junction Road. And I did have some concerns, and we did talk about a lot of these issues. Let's just say my acceptance and support is not overwhelming, but I have a couple reasons for supporting this, and then I'll mention about another applicant that will be coming in sooner or later, I expect, is that the, you know, the four-hour waiting period, the cutoff time, the location, and the hoops that have to be jumped through to buy the alcohol here are significant, and that the type of person that might be a problem drinker is probably not going to want to go through it. And then another main point is the price point. I don't think that individuals that want to, you know, buy large quantities of very inexpensive alcohol to get trashed are going to go to a Walmart, a Pick 'n Save, or another place like this. So, could this be a problem? I could see it as a potential problem if some of the licensed establishments that sell might sell, but quite frankly, I don't see that as a problem with the ones that have come before us. I will also say that there's another applicant out there that is under construction at this point, which is very, very large. It's also in my district, and they will be selling alcohol products. I think they put on their application that 100% of their sales will be for alcohol, and it will be a substantial amount. They said that this is a trend for the many, many other stores. I forget how many they have across the country, but it's in the hundreds, that this is a policy that's nationwide, not just city, or, excuse me, statewide, that they have, this is a policy that's in place in other states, and it's something that has worked. And absent of problems, I'm not coming up with reasons to oppose these licenses. I guess that's my personal take on it, and that was my position for voting in the affirmative on these licenses.
Alder and Bedar?
Thank you. I think we're done with questions, so you can sit down.
Let me just mention, there's also a registration from Peter Oslund, supporting and available to answer questions as well.
So, to answer your question, Alder Clear, we did have actually quite a bit of discussion at ALRC and ended up on a voice vote, but we did have an in-depth discussion about this. And one of the, so, the reason for the support at ALRC was, just as Alder Skidmore pointed out, the fact that we, as we asked questions and dived into it, we realized that there were really quite a bit of protections, and the four-hour advance kind of order really prevented this idea that people are just really going to drive through to just get alcohol in a very, kind of, for over-consumption, that it really was in the same kind of way that you do now, your online grocery, and that this is really part of the way that grocery and retail happens these days. And it's happening actually already in, for example, the Pick 'n Save stores in our surrounding municipalities, that they're already doing this. And that usually it is part of a larger grocery purchase, although the ordinance does not require that. So, with that conversation, I think ALRC felt comfortable moving it forward. Now, the applicants have to still apply under this ordinance to then be granted a license. So, it's not like by adopting this ordinance, we just allow it without people having to go through the process of individual license requirements, which is why you see 21 in our packet. So, with that, we supported it, and I supported it. Now, I would say that this issue, that the question that you just raised, that was actually the question that I raised at ALRC, and we had quite a bit of discussion about how could we operationalize a way in which we would have a percentage of the sale have to be non-alcohol, so that you weren't just purchasing alcohol. And now, I'm just giving my opinion. So, and the reason behind that for me is that liquor stores could also possibly then do this, right? It could be just a liquor store who are doing online, now, liquor sales. So, we could see liquor stores also being able to do this. And we went back and forth on ALRC in the discussion about whether there was a way to add some language that would add a percentage of sale being non-alcohol sale, and some discussion about, you know, you could add one item, like a bag of chips, and would it then fit there? And so, how would they be able to kind of be control the percentage of the sale? Would it be putting too much extra requirements for the retail stores or not? And the conclusion of that discussion was actually that I asked Attorney Zilovy to draft some language for a potential addition that we could discuss today. I have not received that language, and Attorney Zilovy is not here. So, I think if, I will conclude by saying if there is an interest in potentially exploring that, that that would be also another good reason, besides the fact that Alder Viver is not here to refer this item. But, you know, again, I think the concerns about the IDs, the making sure that people weren't just getting much easier access to alcohol were taken care of through the discussion about kind of this four-hour window, the requirements that they have in coming out and actually checking IDs. So, those pieces were actually addressed. So, I think the only other issue was whether we want to, in a way, by putting some language around a percentage sale that is non-alcohol, limit this then to larger establishment that are doing more than just alcohol sale. Because the way it's currently set up, I just want to be, you know, truth in discussion. A liquor store who's going online could apply.
This is a clarifying question that I think I know the answer to, but without the sponsor here to answer it, I'll probably direct it to Attorney May. To be sure, what this is... To be sure, what this is addressing is curbside pickup, not delivery. It doesn't have anything to do with changing delivery, is that right?
That's correct. What it does is establishes new ordinances that would give the ALRC the authority to essentially expand the license premises to include some parking stalls in the parking area where the sale could be made at that point.
Okay. And that's, I mean, obviously, it's pretty clear in the language, but I wanted to say that out loud, because, you know, in addition to pickup becoming more popular, I mean, certainly grocery delivery is radically popular, so I think we should think about the fact that that's likely a next question from the industry, right? Most all of our grocers in our community already do delivery, and with the advent of, or with the folks like Instacart now coming to Madison, where they serve the same purpose as something like in Eat Street, where you just order online from Instacart, and they'll deliver from anywhere, including CVS, by the way, you know, to Alder Skidmore's point, this isn't going to be limited to one or two establishments that may or may not serve at a particular price point. I mean, CVS already offers online pickup. You can order ahead of time. And so, I would encourage folks to not think about this in the context of just, you know, the Walmarts of the world right now. I would think about this more long-term. That doesn't sort of belie my willingness to support it. I think, you know, I think this is a perfectly reasonable idea, but I think we need to be thinking about steps two and steps three after this.
Alden Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that you brought this off the agenda, because I hadn't really, I saw the newspaper article about it, and sort of on the surface, it made sense. And you got to say, when Alder Skidmore supports something like this, you figure, okay, maybe it's not so bad. But having said that, it just strikes me that, you know, if you put this back-to-back with the other kind of hot item on our agenda, it's kind of a trend of all the new ways people need to get alcohol. It's like, how easy can it be, like, so that you, okay, I get the hoops, the waiting, that's all good, but you could just order with your groceries, and maybe a liquor store, you can just order it, and people will deliver it, and it just seems like it's just a quicker, faster way to get alcohol. And I'm not sure, as a public health thing, that that's just necessarily all, it's just all about convenience. So, I just wanted to raise that point, and I think referral might be good. Thanks.
Alden Clear.
Thank you. I just want to appreciate both the applicants from Walmart and my colleagues for the thorough explanation. It really helped me get to a comfort level on this, so, and as I've thought about it, the act of getting out of your car, walking into the store, and then walking out and carrying the product, doesn't really, I think, add any significant protections or anything in terms of public safety, so I think I will support this. And one other thing that occurred to me, it's serving on the Disability Rights Commission, is that not everyone is able to get out of their car and walk into a store and carry things out easily or at all. And so, that's something to be considered as part of this, too. Thank you.
Alden Budar, seal off.
Thank you. I mean, it seems obvious to maybe mention this, but I think that we need to also be cognizant of, this is 2018 now, and this is the way people do their grocery shopping, including myself. And so, we really need to, you know, yes, it is convenience, and buying your bottle of wine with the rest of your purchase is convenience, and so, and I'm not, to address your issue of over-consumption of alcohol, I'm not exactly sure that, you know, this is, again, the thing that's going to prevent somebody or push somebody to over-consume alcohol. That was a discussion around ALRC. Again, you know, the fact that you order four hours in advance, it's like a planned thing, it's not about just driving through and, you know, buying as many bottles of alcohol as you can. So, again, I feel like we need to have something in place, whether this is a perfect thing or not, you know, that's where you land on that balance, but the fact that there needs to be a way that you can pick up with the rest of your purchase, if you want, you know, a bottle of whatever for the party you're having that evening, and that's why you're picking up your groceries, it's the way it is in 2018, and we can't just say, no, no, not in Madison, we're just not going to have people be able to pick up with their groceries or bottle of wine. Again, it's going on in municipalities right around us, and so, we just need to put as many safety parameters around it, and I think Alder Vivier certainly worked on this quite diligently in conjunction with retail establishment that had approached him about it, so that we could find a way that they could do it in an operational way that made sense, but, and at the same time, allow it to happen within the city of Madison, so.
No one else is in the queue. I've got a couple of comments. Do you want Alder and Rumel to take the chair, or can I speak from here? No objection. For those who aren't aware of it, I was asked about this earlier and made it very clear that as long as it was delivered to the car and the patron did not have to go inside, I will certainly veto this and any related ordinances. As someone with very extensive experience working in a very large liquor store for quite a while, I can assure you, there isn't a liquor store in the world, or at least in this country, that will not carry the heaviest load imaginable out to the patron's car, as well as a pint of vodka. So, the notion that if the patron goes into the store, they're then going to be required to carry the liquor out, is out of the question. There isn't a liquor store around that doesn't carry out the goods, whether it fits in a small bag, or it needs three shopping carts. The absence of security, regardless of the checking of the IDs of the people in the vehicle, is not the same in the car as it is in the store, where there are security cameras and obviously far better lighting. I see absolutely no reason, because everybody else's kids are playing in the street or jumping off of piers into shallow water, why we have to adopt their practices. And so, I'd made it clear, if an adjustment was made to the ordinance which required the patron to come into the store to pick up the liquor, I would find it acceptable and would not veto. I also want to point out that some of the descriptions that were given of practices that you just heard are applicable only to the specific people who were before you. For example, the checking of everyone's ID is not in the ordinances, but that may be their practice, and it may be the practice of others, but it's not required. So, with that, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Alden Eskrich.
I'd like to move referral to the next council meeting.
Motion to remove referral to the next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion. No, excuse me, Alden Budar.
So, as a.
Excuse me, Alden Eskrich did wish to speak. I preempted.
I did wish to speak to it. My request would be that you, Mr. Mayor, work with the sponsor and take some leadership on this policy issue before this comes back to us, so that we don't end up having these sorts of discussions on the council floor. I think it's particularly relevant comment tonight.
Thank you. Alden Budar, seal off.
Second that, that's why I seconded. I was reading your mind. And to that, to that, I will also add that I am going to ask Attorney Zilovy to send me that language that I had requested, and I would hope that, or, Mr. Mayor, that you would look at that language also as a way to try to put some parameters around the, again, percentage sale of alcohol versus other groceries, and the fact that they would then kind of limit the number of potential applicants that we would have that we want to apply under this ordinance, and the kind of sales that are happening. And the last point I would make is that if you're going to walk into the store to buy it, then there is no point for you to even be making this transaction online. The whole point of this is that the fact that you don't have to walk into the store. So, it's important to take that into account. But I will definitely ask Attorney Zilovy to send that language and see if that would be something that would help alleviate some of the concerns.
Thank you. No one else is in the queue. I'd like just to share one more thought, if you don't mind, in regards to the notion of it doesn't make sense. I'd take exception to that, and the reason is this: When you're having a large affair, whether it is a graduation ceremony, whether it is a rehearsal party, but any kind of large event, if you've ever done shopping for that, it will take you at least a half an hour to go through a liquor store and purchase all of the different liquors, all of the different mixes, all of the soft drinks, and to assemble them. And so, as it works today, it would make sense, whether you do it by telephone, by fax, or electronically, to place the order in advance, have it ready for you at the time, and then make the transaction. But having handled these events with people and escorting them through a store, I've seen instances where it takes well over an hour, in some instances, for a very large event, an event that in effect could fill, more than fill, the back of a modern SUV. Alden Zellers.
Yes, this is not something that I've really looked into or thought about in detail, but one comment I would make is, in trying to restrict the kinds of establishments that might be able to use this, let's keep in mind our small independent liquor stores, like Star Liquor and Cork and Bottle, and some of the other small independent liquor stores that might, if this is granted for a Walmart but is not allowed for them, that they might be disadvantaged. So, that would be my only comment, is let's not forget about that.
Thank you. No one else is in the queue. The motion before is this referral. On the question of referral, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. It's now past a quarter to the hour of seven, and so, we will go into the public hearings. And at this time, declare a public hearing open on item number three. El Sabo, want to help me with the pronunciation? Els? Any volunteers?
I want to.
Thank you. At 305 North Fourth Street, the hearing is open. There are no registrations. Declare the hearing closed. Declare a hearing open on item four, for Encore Adventure LLC. The hearing is open on this item. We have a number of registrations. The first one is from Holly Alexander, available to answer questions and support, and Brooks Sewell, also available to answer questions. Other questions of the registrants? Seeing none, we'll declare the hearing closed. Item five, declare a hearing open on Masonics LLC, doing business as Cota, 1222 Williamson Street. The recommendation to councils to grant with conditions. And on this item, we'll declare the hearing open. We have a registration supporting available to answer questions from Peter Oslund and from Hannah John Taylor. Are the questions of the recipients, of the applicants? Seeing none, we'll declare the hearing closed. Declare a hearing open on item six, for Pooley's, 5441 High Crossing Boulevard. Recommendations to councils to grant? We have no registrations. Declare the hearing closed. Take a motion now on the public hearing items for ALRC report. Alden Rumel.
I move items three to grant, item four to grant with conditions, item five to grant with conditions, and item six to grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is. Discussion, seeing none. On the applications for these licenses, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. We have a public hearing on item seven, approving plant specs and schedule of assessments for a number of locations, and the recommendation to the councils to adopt under suspension. There are no registrations. Declare the hearing closed. Could I have a motion on this one, please?
Pardon me?
Could I have a motion on seven?
I move adoption under suspension of rules.
Is there a second? Motion, a second, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item eight, we have a public hearing on plant specs and schedule assessments or resurfacing in the 2018 in the Assessment District. Recommendation councils to adopt under suspension. We do have two registrations, one from Alderto Nadi, Nadi, I'm not sure which, and another one from Eric Trifolo, can't, Trifolo, neither opposing or supporting, but wishing to speak.
Sorry, this is going to be more boring, there is no alcohol involved, so. It's more, I, this is about the removal and replacement of the gutter for my property, and I was just wondering what's the process about a total estimate? Since the numbers are quite big for such a small portion, I was wondering if maybe there is, if by any sense, artists coming to do this.
I could certainly talk with you separately, too. You asked what the process was.
Yeah, about the numbers, when, you know.
Sure.
If this estimate is going to be the amount of money I have to pay, how this city is going to handle this.
Yep. So, the city engineers, myself sends out staff to look at each project that we work on. This is resurfacing, so it involves a couple of different streets, but they go out there and they determine what part they believe needs to be repaired, and the estimate's prepared from that. What is actually billed is what is actually done in the field after construction is complete, it's measured. So, what's done is what's actually billed. If a particular individual has a concern in regards to the estimate, staff will go out there and would be happy to go out there and meet with them to discuss those concerns and to look at the issue that needs to be repaired and come to, hopefully come to agreement on that.
So, will we have like a second dialogue, a second chance to?
Absolutely. We can talk it over, and we can, you know, at least gives us a chance to explain why we're doing what we're doing, and for you to give us your thoughts as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Merrick Trulow from 7402 Whittaker Road, and my question is on the curb and gutter that I slated to be replaced. This whole area was used by Madison Gas and Electric as a parking lot for their heavy equipment for a good part of 2016, and I was carefully documenting their activities as they ran up and over this curb with transformers and all sorts of other things. I'm glad I did that. As soon as I saw that that was the area of curb which had sunk, which I am going to be assessed for, I sent a letter to M. Madison Gas and Electric, saying, I really think you're responsible for this. And they did send out someone to look at it, Kathy Broadbeck, who said, it's really up to the city assessor. She did, or city inspector, and she did admit that they had been doing quite a bit of work out there. So, I sent a package with all the pictures to Steve Armstrong and Adam Vandenhavel, I believe, are the two, and when I got this in the mail, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to appear here today, or whether this is something that's going to be taken care of, and I shouldn't be wasting your time with it.
I have no knowledge on that particular issue personally, but we'll be happy to look at that with yourself and MG&E. Certainly, if MG&E admitted that they damaged it, we would bill them directly, but I'm not sure, I can't answer that, but we'd be happy to meet with you, or my staff, meet with you.
Yeah, to be fair to MG&E, they did not admit they did it. You know, she, and the woman who came out was very helpful, she was an arborist, you know, she shows us out there to protect the trees. She was an arborist, you know, she showed us out there to protect the trees. And, you know, she said, "Well, I think that some of this was preexisting and so forth." So we went back and forth. So they did not admit to doing this. So what she did say that, the policy is that the city inspector decides, is that correct?
I'm sorry, the?
The city, now Steve Armstrong would be the person, or Adam Vandenhavel?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so I don't need to keep presenting this here, I don't need to leave any documents, we're good.
You can leave them with me, I'll see you in just a minute here.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, thank you very much. At this point, a motion on the item. Alderwoman Rommel?
Remove adoption under suspension of rules.
And there is a second discussion, seeing none. On the question, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. I believe that takes us to item 12.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Alderwoman Claire?
Really, a question for the city attorney. Items 21, 22, and 28 were licensed premises extensions pursuant to the ordinance that we referred a few minutes ago. Just to be tidy, do we need to reconsider those and also refer them, or would they simply become moot if the ordinance were to not be adopted? Belts and suspenders.
These are expanding the premises pursuant to the ordinance that was referred, I would recommend referring them also.
Okay.
Which means you need to reconsider them and then refer them.
Right, well, I've just spoken, so I can't make the motion.
No, you made a point of parliamentary inquiry.
Okay. Then I move reconsideration of items 21, 22, and 28. And please, someone check to see that those are the only three. Those are the only ones I saw, but.
26.
Oh, you already did 20.
Well, we did all of them.
21, no, you said 28, I meant 26.
28 is the one referred.
Right.
21 and 22.
21 and 22 are the only relevant ones, correct? Okay, 21 and 22, Alderwoman.
Okay. That was my motion.
Your motion to reconsider. I must ask you, were you on the prevailing side?
I believe I was.
Thank you. And there was a second. Discussion on reconsideration, seeing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. They're before us. Do you wish to re-refer them to the next council meeting?
Correct.
Set a motion?
It is.
Second? There is. On this matter of referral, is there discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there a motion, please? Alderwoman Rommel?
Remove adoption of item 12 with conditions.
Motion, and is there a second?
Motion.
Motion is, and a second. Before we go any further, I'd like the city attorney to explain a couple of procedural items.
Well, for, I, okay. So it's, the motion to approve it is, in essence, to override the veto and to get 14 votes, is that correct? That's what I understood.
It looks like.
Okay. I've already been asked by some members about whether you can refer this to the next meeting, given that some of the, excuse me, some of your colleagues are absent. And the answer is, I don't know. In the, I gave an opinion a couple of years ago about reconsideration, where I told you I didn't know whether you could reconsider. I recommended you adopt a rule so that you knew what it was. In that opinion, I sort of assumed that referral was possible. It's contrary to an opinion given by prior city attorney Conrad. I said at that time that I couldn't find any, any reason to believe in his opinion that you couldn't refer it. I looked at the statutes, there is the language that it's to be presented and disposed of then by the council, which one could argue means you can't refer it, you have to take a vote at that time. So I'm just not sure where we stand on whether you have the right to refer. I would point out that with the rule you've adopted on reconsideration, you can essentially get to the same place. You can take a vote tonight, if you're unable to overturn or override the veto, any person who is not here tonight can come in at the next meeting, make a motion for reconsideration. If 11 members agree to reconsider, you're right back where you are, and you have another chance to consider the veto override. So my advice, although I'm not absolutely certain about it, is that you stick with the rules that you adopted, which is that if you want to have, if you want to have a second chance when more members are present, that you use your right to reconsider it at the next subsequent meeting, rather than trying to do a referral, which I'm not certain of your ability to do that, particularly in light of the fact that you did adopt a rule about reconsideration and nothing about referral. So that's sort of the background of where we are right now.
All right, and can you share with us, if a vote is taken tonight, how many affirmative aye votes are needed to override the veto?
You need 14 votes regardless of the number of members who are here. So that's why the absence of some members is an issue.
Discussion on the question, I'd like to address it, but first, Alderwoman Eskrich is in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to move referral so that we could have that lovely conversation that we just had. So I would just say at this time that I maybe hope that we do not engage in discussion about this tonight, if we are likely to discuss it again in two weeks, just to save ourselves from having this discussion twice. So maybe we just take the vote tonight and then have conversation in two weeks, should that be relevant, just so that we save ourselves some time. That's just my suggestion.
It's a suggestion that's not a motion, and let me also point out, we've got a registration from Chuck Litwiler, opposing and not wishing to speak, Bob Lack, supporting, available to answer questions, Patrick Yulberg, available to answer questions, representing the applicant, so I assume that's in support of the license, and Douglas Buck, supporting, available to answer questions. So before I present, I want to just look and see if there is any motion here to refer to the next council meeting. If not, Alderwoman Rommel, would you? Pardon, what's, would you take the chair? Alderwoman Eskrich?
Perhaps this is just a point of order, but I interpreted the statement that the city attorney just made as to say that we can, we should not move to refer, but my motion would have absolutely been to refer.
I just wanted to check before I proceeded. Alderwoman Rommel? Go over the screen.
Screen now. No one's in the queue, I guess the mayor is aye. Is up.
I'm not going to go into all of the reasons I shared with you in regards to the veto, except to repeat, I see no public value in the issuance of this license, but there's a couple of other questions that have come up since the veto that I want to be very clear about. One, this body is under no obligation to approve the license. Absolutely none. This is not the standard that is used in terms of a revocation. The council has to follow a standard of not being discriminatory. But obviously, there is no evidence in denying this license of any form of discrimination. Second point I want to make is that the issue is not the difference between the alcohol consumed in bars and taverns. The issue is not necessarily what takes place in this establishment. The issue is the enormous cost and chaos that occurs in the city on Friday and Saturday And I've asked you repeatedly, before approving another license in this area, to please go down to the 500 block of State Street, around Francis, to the 600 block of University Avenue, to see firsthand what takes place. When you're out there at that hour, you cannot tell the difference between who has been drinking in a bar or in a restaurant. But you can tell the enormous cost in terms of injury to people, the danger of our police officers face, and the enormous expense to this city. What you're about to see is shot in the dark, so it's visually not the best quality. It's going to happen very fast. I suggest as you watch it, you've, and I've had an opportunity to watch it many times, you focus on several things. First, the fact that even when police officers are present, violence breaks out. Secondly, the swiftness with which it takes place. And thirdly, how when the violence occurs, you'll notice that the crowds move almost like an amoeba towards the violence, making it more difficult for the police officers, except of course, when somebody's shot, then everybody runs. only a five-minute presentation be assembled for this meeting. It's five minutes and 12 seconds. It happens every single Friday and Saturday night. People are getting hurt. You saw the fire trucks out there. Eighty-five percent of the rest of the city is not getting service because of the officers and the firefighters who are committed to this area, despite the fact that we increased by 30% and then doubled the financial cost of the officers who participate in the special work on these weekend nights. Thank you.
Alder Zellers, followed by Alder Bedar.
I have several things that I want to touch upon. First, the meeting that I had with the applicant and Captain Friedman. The applicant at that time was requesting a full alcohol license and extending it to bar time. What we indicated to the applicant, what I indicated, was I would not be able to support that. The best I could do would be to support a beer/wine license with a close there, or a limit of 10:00 p.m. on weeknights and midnight on Friday and Saturday nights. This is consistent with the other two recent applications that I have received on the 500 block of State Street. One other one was also a fast food restaurant. They advertise 150 seconds and the pizza will be ready, that's about as fast as you can get. And I note, and I don't know who provided the information about the 500 block of State Street, I would note that there was only one disturbance call related to that particular establishment in the past year. The other establishment also, and it was a struggle to get there, for this other establishment, Koish Sushi, you may remember that one, who wanted to have late hours, and we held the line at 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock, and held the line in turn. and held the line in terms of wine and beer. No calls at all during this period of time. Captain Friedman, and we can ask of him, has indicated that with these conditions and with the applicant having followed through on the additional security requests that he does not have a problem with this particular license. The other thing that I would note is, while what we saw was certainly horrifying in many ways, I didn't see, and maybe I missed something, but this all appeared to be the 600 block of University Avenue. Not the 500 block of State Street. Now, I'm not saying that there are no problems on the 500 block of State Street. But I don't believe there is any indication that beer/wine and the earlier closing hours, that those establishments are the source of the problem. I certainly agree with the mayor that we need to do something. My thought is that we should get to the root of the problem and where it's coming from. I want to quote a constituent who commented about this. He said, quote, "While I sympathize with Sogland's beef, it seems some folks just want to hate on Taco Bell for being a national chain and fast food. Randomly dismissing alcohol license requests without clear criteria and/or an overall plan/strategy seems unfair." And certainly, as the mayor said, we can turn this license down for any reason or no reason. But I do think that we should have some criteria and standards that we would then apply to license requests. I think that that would be the best practice and process. And I would absolutely support establishing additional standards and then communication of those kinds of standards to potential applicants. But in the absence of that, I would have to vote for an override of the veto. Again, I want to say that I really would heartily support additional standards. I was very involved when Capital Neighborhoods was looking into problems with alcohol and asking for that very thing a number of years ago. So I would support that. But in the absence of clear criteria, it simply seems, as my constituent said, a little too random for me. So I have to vote for override.
Thank you. Alder Bedar to be followed by Alder Kimball.
Thank you. I had actually a question for Captain Friedman. I just wanted you to clarify for us what you shared with us at ALRC about this particular license application and whether you felt that, given the conditions, again, of close time, you were comfortable with this particular application?
Thank you, Alder. So first, just in regards to the information or the data on calls for service. Alder Rumel asked over the holidays if we could identify which establishments were on the 500 block that had alcohol licenses and run some data. So earlier today, working with the clerk's office, who identified these establishments, I had some of my staff filter out, looking at those fights, disturbances, alcohol-related issues. And this was what was generated for the year. So that was the background to that report. It was certainly a hasty look. It's not particularly in-depth, but I think it does capture some trends and certainly highlight some of the differences between what we know downtown as being the full bars versus restaurants that serve alcohol. And so those things were not surprising in terms of what the data shows. So in regards to the particular applicant, if I take a step back, you know, I absolutely agree that strategically, work needs to be done downtown. It's been our number-one priority central district in 2017. It's going to be in 2018. Two of those videos that you saw up there, I was involved with. One being the individual who was knocked out in Hawthorne Court. I encountered him bleeding and staggering on the street and followed his blood trail back to that location. I also had the pleasure of being out in that thunderstorm in June and dealing with those multiple fights. So I certainly have firsthand experience. I am extremely concerned. That flashback to 2012, we absolutely do not want a repeat of that. And anything we can do to bend those trends and to work towards those root problems, I am absolutely supportive of. And additional guidelines or scrutiny or a strategic plan, I absolutely support those things. But in regard to this specific applicant, as Alder Zeller said, the applicant did approach us some time ago. We met with the applicants. They demonstrated a significant amount of understanding of the circumstances that they were setting up in. They were very amenable to the concerns that we had and the changes that we requested. Far more amenable than many other applicants in terms of their alacrity and willingness to adjust their business model. They demonstrated a level of due diligence, of planning, of understanding of the business that is certainly in total and absolutely, not only relatively compared to previous applicants who have been granted licenses, but just in terms of an absolute sense. They clearly met the standards. From my standpoint, there were no red flags, that they were going to be practicing due diligence and et cetera. So I certainly am. There are two huge drivers that are pushing this problem. One is capacity and one is overconsumption. Those are, that's a two-headed problem. We absolutely need to address those. But on a case-by-case standpoint, we did not see any security concerns with this applicant. And they appeared to present a very cogent, well-thought-out and flexible plan. And they have met every condition that certainly we requested, my team requested, the Alder as well as the ALRC.
Alder Bedar?
That was all my questions.
Thank you. Alder Kimball to be followed by Alder Skidmore.
I wasn't here for last month's council meeting, but I did watch it live as you were discussing this license. And a lot of the discussion was around, they met the standards of the ALRC, so we have to approve this. And the ALRC may have had to approve it, but we don't. There's a reason it comes to the council. And the council is not, we're not just a rubber stamp for the Plan Commission or the ALRC or other bodies that make decisions. We're allowed to think more broadly about these issues. And the video that the mayor showed, that's welcome to my world. That's my working environment. I'm a cab driver on Friday and Saturday nights. And I have been in those situations every single weekend. I have to negotiate those situations as a worker, helping to take people home safely so they don't drive drunk. And I have to say that the 600 block of University Ave is bad, but the 500 block of State Street is also bad. There's a pinch point between Mondays and Whiskey Jacks. And you'll recognize this is true, right? There's where crowds from both sides of the streets come into the streets. And a lot of the incidents, I don't know if these incidents, Captain Friedman, are specifically inside the establishments or that were...
If I may. So it depends on how they were coded, but they were somehow associated with those establishments. So some happened inside, some that happened on the street. If the information was gathered that they originated or were associated, you know, in a relatively direct manner with that establishment, then that would show up. But what we do try to avoid is if something starts down the street, but it kind of finishes in front of, you name it. We don't want that place of where it finished to be like, well, this was your fault. Because all that happened was that a fight that started up the street finished down the street. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so there could be a lot more incidences that happened on this block but aren't recorded because they weren't associated with it in that...
That's possible. Again, it's not a deep dive into the data, but it is only linking those. If we had a direct reason to link an incident to 502 State, it would show up there.
So the problem is not necessarily with the establishments themselves, but with the mass of people, some of whom aren't even drunk, but haven't been drinking, some of whom intentionally just go out to pick fights. And I know this because I hear passengers talking about it. They'll go out literally to do nothing other than to get into fights with people because that's their form of entertainment. And so as I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about not the particular, I'm thinking about the general situation in our community and how we as a council have a responsibility for it. And adding one more venue that serves alcohol is not helping. It's hurting that. Even if they have to close by 10, if there's more opportunity for alcohol sales and for people to drink, that is generally making the situation worse. And that's why I'm going to, I am going to vote, I guess, no, which would be to support the veto. Because we do have to do something. We do have to have a plan and a strategy. We have to come up with that. And we have to start somewhere. And you know what? We can say enough is enough. We're going to uphold this veto and then come up with a strategy. Because we, I feel like I can't agree to any more increase in alcohol serving, no matter what the restrictions, no matter who the applicant. This is a bigger issue. And I was just reflecting on actually a Facebook post that Lieutenant Brian Austin shared back in November. He shared that article about the 600 block of University being like gang turf. And his comment was, more policing is not going to help this. And he's the lieutenant who is in charge of that, of those units. And they're doing, the police are doing the best they can. But it's, and it's, you know, maybe catching some bad guys, but it's not stopping the problem. And we have the responsibility to do something, to not make it worse at least. So that's, and I understand why the ALRC felt that they had to approve this license because they do have standards. They do have to have pretty strict ways that they make decisions. But we don't. We can make broader decisions.
And we have Alder Skidmore to be followed by Alder McKinney and Alder Cheeks.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate Alder Kimball's comments. They're going to echo how I've been feeling. And I appreciate not being alone on this. I opposed granting this license at the ALRC level and at the council. And I articulated my opposition. Once again, I have no problem with Taco Bell, per se, as an operator or even with their cantinas and serving alcohol. This is all about the location and the oversaturation, as has been stated, of the availability of alcohol here and then the associated problems in the area that come from the overconsumption, the calls for service. And we're increasing the quantity of alcohol in this area, yet we're scratching our heads as to what to do with it. This oversaturation has led to problems that are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the people in this area and the rest of the city. Because at the last meeting, I asked how many officers were out on the street on a particular Saturday night. And there were 40 down in this area, when I think there's only 28 allocated for the rest of the city. And that has some pretty big impacts on the operation of the whole city, not just the police department. There's some important points to consider. I won't go over everything. I have a feeling we may be doing this again in two weeks. But, you know, the captain said that the applicant was very good. And granted, yes, they are. They said all the right things. And Alder Zeller did comment that they came in for a full alcohol license. And he did say that at his application, but he withdrew that when he knew he couldn't get it. So he went in with what he had. But he made it very clear that alcohol was an important part of their business plan. And I recall him saying that he would be back to ask for more at the right time, whenever that is. And I can also recall that he was, I'm not sure ambivalent is the right word, but let's say he wasn't real committal, he was noncommittal as to whether he could operate a Taco Bell without alcohol. That's kind of scary to think about. It's an important part of the business to make money off of alcohol down there. It's been said that we had to approve this plan because if we didn't, we might get sued. Because we've approved Koi Sushi and we've approved other restaurants. No, I don't buy that. Just because we approve one, that doesn't mean that approving them one right after the other is going to not have an impact on the area. It has. Many of these problems, I would say most of the problems occur outside. You can point to the fights that start in the licensed establishments. I can recall very recently a bouncer being cold-cocked and knocked unconscious at a local establishment. And then while the police were on their way, another fight broke out. So they had two to deal with. When they were hauling one away, the crowd turned into a mob and turned on the police department. It's very fortunate that UW police were available for backup. Otherwise, it could have ended much differently. Mob mentality is something that I think people are overlooking. You watched it on the video. That is really very tame. I've been down there on a regular basis. It's something quite different to be in the middle of that and being buffeted around and wondering if somebody's going to take a poke at you. Having to deal with this is a big stressor on the officers that are down there. The mob mentality is something that is very, very real. Lastly, the last thing I want to mention is that the activity down there is not changing. It's not, well, yes, it is changing. It's getting worse, no matter how you look at it. It's cold as hell out there now, and there are still these problems. And we have seen a dramatic increase in the overtime paid to Madison Police Department. Yes, that's a lot of money, and we're going to be dealing with that. But you also have to understand the impact on the officers. This is a big stressor. When you go out there, you have an anticipation that people are going to, or hope that they're going to comply. And when a mob turns on you and the numbers are not good, it can be very scary. This is very stressful. This is very important. I think we need to draw the line. I think we have the ability to draw the line. I think it's within our legal rights. And we are not causing a hardship to Taco Bell by denying this license. We are protecting our neighborhood. We're protecting our people and the officers that serve our city. So I will be supporting the veto, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Alder. Next is Alder McKinney to be followed by Alder Cheeks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was a noticed absent, so I wasn't here for the discussion when this came before the body. But what really stood out for me was the fact that there is a concentration of police resources every weekend in that 500 block. there is a concentration of police resources every weekend in that 500 block area. And my district is on the far west side, and so I asked some of my constituents, why would this matter to them? And why it matters is that they are among the large number of residents who are not protected because the concentration of police resources in one particular area. That's driving my decision. The other decision is public safety. We have the police coming before us, and they're saying that we need to increase the number of police officers on the street. And as we're faced with that, we're also looking at a concentration of police resources in one particular area. Public safety is at issue. A growing concern of public safety. I do understand the decision by the ALRC because the upgrade of the business model, the commitment by this establishment to install high-security cameras and come into the compliance. And another thing is that when the business said that this is consistent with other licenses that you have granted, that's challenging. But then I come back to say that when do we as policymakers say that this, to say no? I agree with Alder Zeller when she said that there needs to be some consistent policy with clear objectives, criteria. That's critically important, because we find ourselves right back in the same place as we found ourselves with other reports that come before me. I cannot support another liquor license. It has nothing to do with the establishment, but it has everything to do with us as policymakers, being aware that there is a clear issue of public safety and not addressing what that issue is. Surely, we can pass on and say, but, you know, we have to look at this isolated business. But you cannot look at this isolated business because they will be placed in an area where there is an overconsumption and capacity. You can't separate one from the other. And I asked my colleagues for us to start thinking about how we can address the public safety issues of that area, not add to it, but specifically begin to address it and not pass it on. Saying yes to this establishment passes it on until it comes back before us again. This is an issue that is not going to go away. Businesses in that area are complaining about it being a safe place for them to even conduct their own business. We cannot ignore that. We should not ignore that. That's what we are all about. So I will be upholding the veto, and I would ask my colleagues to start thinking about how we can really make this a priority, so we don't find ourselves in this place again. So I will be upholding the veto.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Cheeks to be followed by a whole bunch of people in the queue, but I'm going to call on Alder Carter, the mayor, and then Alder Fair and Alder Bedar. Alder Cheeks.
I didn't realize I was so long in the queue. A lot of people lined up really quickly. I actually have a question that was generated by the mayor. But I guess I can just speak to it since he's second to next in the queue. I think tonight, we've heard from the Alder and from, you know, the police, that there is a feeling that this particular applicant that's under, being discussed here today, has been a good actor. And that they have been, what was the word, more amenable than many other applicants. Obviously, the counter argument that's being articulated here is that there needs to be a broader plan. I think on both sides of this discussion here today, you're hearing, and for that matter, in the past, for the past several years, you've heard a willingness from the council to be amenable to a strategic plan, right? If the idea here is that there need to be additional guidelines and scrutiny and some sort of strategic plan around how we administer licenses throughout the city, or specifically in this area of downtown, you know, certainly I think that's reasonable. I think what, and I guess I'll just leave this on the floor for the council, for the mayor to address when he gets to speak. I mean, I think, you know, many people here probably know that the mayor took steps to eliminate the alcohol policy coordinator a couple of years ago. But like, I would really like to hear from the mayor directly, what steps, besides this veto and ones like it, what steps have been taken to implement strategy around how we keep our cities safe, specifically as it relates to the thought that alcohol, which is a legal substance, obviously, how we keep our cities safe, and particularly this area of the city, while continuing to be a city that sells alcohol. I really think, you know, all this discussion has to do, if the discussion is meant to be bigger, and it's meant to be about guidelines and strategic plans and leadership, I'd like to know the steps that have been taken, from the mayor's perspective, since he's so obviously passionate about this issue. What strategic plan is in draft or awaiting us? And how does the absence of an alcohol policy coordinator assist in that?
I know the mayor would like to answer, but I'd like to get a few more Alders who are in the queue, and then he can like compile a long answer, if that's what he wants to do. Alder Carter.
Thank you. I just have a question for Officer Friedman. When you get these calls, where are the officers coming from? And I know it will vary, but if you can just give me a general idea.
Sure. So if we're talking about Friday and Saturday nights when we have DSI personnel, typically, they're the first-line response between the hours of 11:00 PM and 3:00 AM. And those are officers that are working overtime. They typically are holding over from their shift, or they're coming in on days off. And they're, this, in 2017, it was usually in that 10, 12, 14 officer range. We also have our central community policing team that three out of every four weekends is typically out there at night, and so they would also be sort of an immediate response. That's their focus area on weekend nights. And then we also have our downtown patrol officers. So depending on the number of incidents, the size of the incident, the dangerousness, it, resources will be sent until they are sufficient to stabilize the scene. Sometimes that's a few officers, sometimes it's many officers. But the way it would work is the officers dedicated to that area would respond first, and then the next closer officers and district officers, and then out-of-district officers, or mutual aid potentially from other agencies like UW or Dane County Sheriff, so.
Okay, thank you. Alder Fair.
Oh, thank you. I don't want to, I didn't even plan to speak tonight, but it looks like we're going to have a very close vote here. So I don't want to repeat myself or what others said, because I think I said, you know, last, in December, you know, we faced this issue two years ago or so. We talked on this floor about, like has been said, a plan, a strategy, that most people are on board to participate in that. And we haven't seen anything, or hadn't been reached out to. I don't know, as we'll maybe hear an answer to Alder Cheeks' question. In the absence of that, you know, we've heard a lot of talk about policymakers. I don't know how we can call ourselves policymakers and vote for the, you know, with the mayor, I'm forgetting how to, you know, for the veto. Because we would be making a decision with absence of a policy at the detriment of a business, regardless if it's a national chain or whatever. So I don't know how he'd be really considered policymakers in that perspective. And then, just to be blunt, I don't know how we could, anyone could believe that by not, by allowing this cantina to go forward, that somehow it's going to make the issues that we saw on that screen better or worse. Now, I'm not, there's a bigger question here to be talked about, definitely. I mean, I'm one of the folks who have pushed for public health getting into violence prevention, and that's a huge part of this, right? And the issue of alcohol needs to be studied and looked at and looked for root causes. But one taco cantina that serves until 10 o'clock is going to make that issue that we saw on the screen any worse, or not having it any better? If you really think that, then, I mean, I'm sorry, I just think that's ridiculous. So, we need to be thinking about the root causes, as people have said, and stop holding certain businesses hostage, regardless of who they are, a small mom-and-pop like two years ago, or a national chain, until we figure out a bigger, broader policy.
I'm going to call Alder Wood and then the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a whole lot of thoughts when I buzzed into the queue originally. They've all been spoken to, in particular, those of my colleague and aldermanic neighbor, Alder Zellers. It's in her district, this establishment. It's about 100 yards from mine, so I've certainly reviewed the license thoroughly. Originally, at the original application, I was a pretty hard no with the full license and full bar hours. So I want to thank the ALRC for their conditions. I'm fairly comfortable with it with just the beer and wine and the limited hours. The only other thing I wanted to add, and this, again, has been touched on by a number of my colleagues, is the need for a policy. We say that every single time we have one of these controversial licenses before us. I suppose I'm volunteering myself to a degree as a downtown Alder, because I don't want to have this conversation again where we say we need a policy, and then we don't have a policy the next time we need the policy. So check your inboxes, and hopefully we can actually formulate a policy going forward with the council and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
So it's been quite a few number of years now that I have continually come before this council. I have gone to the ALRC. I have asked for that policy. I have articulated what I thought it ought to be. No new licenses in the State Street, in the Capitol concourse area, unless it is part of a hotel. I could take it a little bit further. I have offered that up repeatedly, year after year after year. And if you need a policy, good policy to start with is a moratorium of no new licenses until there is a policy to your satisfaction. You saw the video. That was the easiest to assemble, because it was quickly available since it had already been used for other purposes. I'll be glad the next time this discussion comes up to bring you the 500 block of State Street video. If you think about all the places serving alcohol in the area, is any one of them singularly responsible? If they were, we would have revoked their license. Now, if Taco Bell were to take all of the patrons who came in and drank home at 10 o'clock, maybe there'd be some credibility to the argument that this doesn't contribute to the problem. It is the cumulative effect of the volume of liquor consumed and the number of people consuming it. You saw what the consequences are in your city. Every weekend, it has to stop. We are not making progress. And keep in mind that the officers who are out there on the special assignment are volunteers, and we are having a harder and harder time getting them to commit. Now, we talk all the time about public safety and the need for additional officers and patrol, and this is undermining it. This is a policy issue. This is not a matter for an alcohol license coordinator, who is an administrator, who is brought on to deal with a university program that the University of Wisconsin abandoned and dropped, in a city that is consistently, along with her sisters, of four or five other Wisconsin cities, ranked in the top 10 in the United States for binge drinking. Yes, we share that distinction with Green Bay. I believe Oshkosh is on the list. I really don't care to go back and review it. But we are consistently on that list of one of the top 10 cities for binge drinking. It is a cumulative effect brought on by the allowance of the expansion of mega saloons, more licenses. It doesn't matter that they are closing up at 10 o'clock. You have no guarantee that their patrons are going to stop consuming after 10 o'clock, or are going to go home at 10 o'clock. And since this is a council that is so preoccupied with precedent, it's almost a fetish. Because we gave one to the applicant a couple of months ago in the 500 block. How could we say no to that? We'll have to say, can't say no to this one? What are we going to do when McDonald's asks for the license? What are we going to do when Starbucks asks for the license? Because I can guarantee you that Starbucks will be in here. Starbucks already has similar licenses in Fitchburg and Middleton. They applied for one across the street, because we need more liquor within a block of this building. And it was only when I threatened to veto it, even though they made a calculated error probably, because at that time, my guess is the council would have had the votes to override the veto. It was only then that they withdraw it. But when you issue this one, they are going to be back. Keep in mind, as I told you in the past, this is another national trend. And there is no law that says we have to be part of it. It's part of a national trend of chain restaurants and coffee shops, moving towards greater revenues at and after the dinner hour. And the way they're going to accomplish it is with liquor. And yes, you heard, they have every intention, when the time is right, in coming back here and asking for a full liquor license. By that time, there'll be a cantina out at Easttown, there'll be a McDonald's off of High Point Road, which we'll have granted a full liquor license, and then that will be the right time for them. The only one of these outfits that I can't figure out how they're going to do it is Dunkin' Donuts. Wine in a donut just doesn't seem to work. But the alcohol license coordinator facilitated the application process for the applicants, had nothing to do with the policy of issuing the licenses, and was involved with the University of Wisconsin, as I said, who dropped the program dealing with alcohol, substance abuse around the campus. around the campus. So we're pretty much on this on our own, except for those instances when university police are called in to back up our own officers.
Thank you. May I ask a couple of questions of the chair? And then, well, you've already spoken. I'm going to call on people who haven't spoken yet before I go in the second round, because, but just wanted to ask Captain Friedman. I know that you, this is just a top-of-the-hat question, you won't have the answer necessarily. But one thing that struck me in that video is, I don't know which, is it W that has the upstairs outside? Like, what are the capacity of those two bars there? It's probably close to 1,000. Is that a fair assumption? Several hundred.
So I believe that Liquid has in the range, I know, but I didn't know.
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to yell. Okay. That will work better. That, yeah, I didn't take that into consideration. So roughly speaking, Liquid has approximately 700 as their capacity. I believe Wando's is in the 200 to 300 range. W is somewhere in the middle. I think if you took the combined capacity of the 600 University Block from Lake Street, say, to Francis, it's 1,500, maybe 2,000, somewhere in that range. If it were, I mean, I certainly could get those numbers with a little bit of notice.
So it just seems to me that if that's a trouble, a hotspot, if that's the new word, that, I know that Alder Verveer mentioned to me that the ALRC was going to look at that. Maybe Alder Bedard can speak to that kind of capacity issue, because if we're disrupting this, it seems like it has to start there. But that's just my opinion. The other thing I just feel now compelled to say about the alcohol policy coordinators, we kept that position after the UW dropped it, and it was held by a very capable young man who, I have to say, helped me immensely as a policymaker in my district. He came to more meetings than you want to know about, about, say, Plan B, for example, to help us craft some kind of answer. And so he was really, something now I see is missing. I'm sure Mr. Verbic is fine in the administrative level, and he was promised to go to meetings, but I haven't really found the opportunity to ask him to a meeting yet, but I might. And so that's it. Thank you. I just felt compelled to say those things. Alder Bedard, to be followed by Alder Ahrens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I hadn't spoken on this. I had just asked two questions of the, of Captain Friedman. So now I'm going to speak to it. So I just wanted the record to be straight that I'm not speaking twice. I had asked questions, and I will only speak once. So I'll start with the last thing, which is what you mentioned. We did have an alcohol policy coordinator. I shared with all of you some documents that go back to things that we have approved on this council, and one of them has an attachment that is a 17-page staff recommendation on policies around alcohol. So he was an alcohol policy person, and he did much more than shoveling papers to applicants. He was really helping us talk about policy and how to do policy. And he's the one, as in his role, that helped us move from Aldo 2.0 to the new policy. We do have currently a policy. It's in the books. It was passed by the council in 2014, and it has an overlay district that includes State Street. So we do currently have a policy. And that policy was based, again, on lots of discussion and the work of our alcohol policy person and work by the planning department and our zoning. And so we came up with a new way of doing things that involved the overlay district and our zoning code to do that, and new definitions that included additional definition that just restaurant taverns. So again, I'd like to point out that that was two years of discussion. We did have an alcohol policy person. He was extremely helpful. That position, that role was taken away without any, certainly, discussion, and it is sorely missed, and I've repeated it every time we've had this discussion, that without somebody that really has that role within the city, that is number one, or number two, or number three, it is such an important issue, shouldn't we have somebody within city government whose role is to help us through writing and defining policy around it? So, and again, it wasn't my doing to do away with that position. I certainly wasn't asked that question, nor was any member of the ALRC who deals with these issues on a monthly basis. So we do have a policy in place. Random decision-making is certainly not policymaking. So for us to say that we're policymakers and then follow that with the fact that then we're going to make a random decision, it's a contradiction in term. It's, in my opinion, an oxymoron. It does not make sense. And for me to be told that I, you know, we have been talking about policies and we've been, you know, nobody has taken out, I vote on policy that's put before me. I don't have to be drafting every piece of policy. It is not my biggest issue that I'm dealing with. If the mayor feels that a moratorium is necessary, the mayor can put in tomorrow a resolution forth that will be before this council. We can discuss a moratorium, and maybe, maybe you're calculating wrong whether you will have the vote for a moratorium. So maybe that's what should happen. Maybe we should have a policy put before us. Again, I appreciate, sincerely appreciate Alder Wood saying that you are now going to take that on, because that's what we need before us, whether it's a moratorium for now, and then the next thing that happens is a broader discussion about what's after the moratorium. But again, two years ago, we sat here and we had the exact same discussion. There was a discussion about one license, and I said, if we're going to discuss a moratorium, let's have a policy, a resolution before us that says we want a moratorium. Let's discuss that, and then we're not dealing with this. We're not being random decision-maker based on, as far as I can tell, picking on random applicants. Because when HopCat, which is the largest establishment we have approved with capacity after, again, the new policy was passed, there was no veto there, but suddenly now there is a veto. I'm not exactly sure that I understand, you know, the reasoning behind the veto. I think Alder Zellers constituent maybe, you know, is onto something when he's, when he talked about it. So we can't just make random decision-making. That's not a strategy, that's not a policy, and enough is not, is enough is also not a strategy nor a policy. I certainly would like also to see less overconsumption of alcohol. It is certainly a public health crisis in our state. You know, I know it. Alder Ahrens knows about it and has talked about it very much so too. But again, random decision-making is not going to solve it, and certainly not on an establishment that's going to close, attempt, stop serving alcohol at that time. And just like Alder Fair said, it's not going to make a difference in what we just saw in that video, which is extremely disturbing. And our own captain for that district, who is foot on the grounds on that district, has said so. So for us to just, again, randomly go on to a tangent to try to correlate things that are, again, have no correlation, direct correlation, it's, to me, really not good policymaking. It's certainly good random decision-making.
Thank you. Alder Ahrens.
I'd like to call a question.
All right. Can we have the city attorney help us make sure we pose the question properly?
The motion is to adopt the ordinance. So an "aye" vote is a motion to override the mayor's veto. I'm sorry, to grant the license, not adopt the ordinance. Thank you. So an "aye" vote grants the license and would override the mayor's veto. A "no" vote would support the mayor's veto, and there needs to be 14 "aye" votes to grant the license. We should probably do a roll call.
And we should do a roll call. Alder Harrod and Tim McKinney?
No.
No. Kemble?
No.
No. King is excused. Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Palm is excused. Fair?
Aye.
Aye. Rumel?
Pass.
Pass. Skidmore?
No.
No. Verveer is excused. Wood?
Aye.
Aye. Zellers?
Aye.
Aye. Ahrens?
No.
No. Falday?
No.
No. Bedar Seeloff?
Aye.
Aye. Carter?
No.
No. Cheeks?
Aye.
Aye. Clear?
Aye.
Aye. DeMarb is excused.
Esrich?
Aye.
Aye. Hall?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Rumel?
No.
No. Seven no's, so it failed the over, the veto is upheld.
The veto is upheld. License is not granted.
Who opened the vote?
Nine ayes and seven no's. Is that correct?
So that is, are there any other items before us?
Yes, there's 73.
Oh, good. Thank you for.
73.
Second. Right.
I'd like to move the original. I believe the substitute is not really in order since it's not a substitute, and I would like to move the original.
Moved and seconded. And anybody in the queue? I know we had some staff here. I don't know if they're just here to witness this or have comments people can ask. Oh, we have a registrant not wishing to speak in support available, just chuck lit wire. Alder Kemble?
Can I speak to this? So this is a resolution supporting the Bus Rapid Transit interagency staff team recommendation to proceed with Phase One of the project development. And both the mayor and I were cosponsors of this. It was making its way through all of the various committees. TPC was control, was in control of it. I was not able to attend the TPC meeting. I did attend the Ped, Bike, and Motor Vehicle Commission meeting where it passed. The Plan Commission recommended it pass. And then at the LRTPC meeting, I believe, there was an addition made, I'm trying to look for it, additional language that called for the creation of an oversight committee to guide further planning and to, that the oversight committee should consider all possible funding sources to help pay for BRT. Somehow that got entered as a substitute without the knowledge of either of the cosponsors, and so we just found out when it came up on the agenda last week. Neither of us agree to that addition. We got an email from Alder DeMarb, the head of Torque, who explained the rationale for her support of the original version, which is that, I believe, both of the sponsors of the original resolution, plus Alder DeMarb, both think that the, whatever committee or public input will be, will be gathered, should be organized by the new director of transportation and under the auspices of the new Transportation Policy and Planning Board, not legislated by, through this resolution. So that is our thinking about this.
Thank you. Alder Bedar?
I just had, thank you, and I'm certainly very supportive. I just had a question about, when he talked about UW campus and Madison Central Business District, I was trying to kind of figure out if there was already kind of a map of the boundaries of Phase One, or that's part of the future discussion, just because obviously part of my district abouts with the west side of that. So I was just trying to have a sense of whether we already knew how far we were talking about when we were talking central and west.
Our planning director is ready to answer. Hi, Natalie.
I think part of this alternatives analysis has determined what those endpoints are and how that works. So we don't have that answer. What we're really doing is just identifying that central core plus some piece on either side going east to west. And the study should give more information on what that would look like.
And is part of the study going to be, I mean, I read in, that it seemed to say in some of the WRAAS clauses, like an engagement of the people living in those areas and...
Yes, and there is actually being introduced tonight a request for approval to issue an RFP to engage a consultant, and that would be part of that consultant's work would be a full engagement program.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder McKinney?
I withdraw.
You're answered? Okay. So is no one in the queue? Before us is the version one. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of version one signify saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Pass? That passes. So is there any introductions from the floor? It's the first meeting, I guess. There are nine. So who's going to stand in for Alder King, as usual? Is there a second? All in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. We're adjourned. Happy New Year.